Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the March fourteenth Town of Wareham Select Board Meeting. May I have a roll call, please? You're muted.
Good evening. We have here tonight Mr. Slaven, Mr. Bessie, Mr. Chadwick, Ms. Whiteside, and Ms. Worts, and we will not have Mr. Sullivan or Mr. Bowen in attendance this evening.
Thank you. Ms. Worts, would you do the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Announcements, Mr. Bessie?
Yes, good evening. Just, uh, just one tonight. The Wareham Boys Basketball Team had their Final Four game was supposed to be tonight, but was postponed because of the weather is now going to be scheduled for tomorrow at 6:00 PM, and the venue has changed to Bridgewater Rainham, I believe. You know, an exciting time for the basketball team. It's been a little while since they've been this deep into the States. One more win and they'll play for the state championship for the Division Four in MIAA. So I want to wish them all the luck, and I'm kind of happy I got postponed because now I can attend tomorrow night. I was a little disappointed. I was like, man, you know, I just want to be there, but but excited for them. So I wish them all the, give them all the good vibes and we'll be rooting them on tomorrow, and hopefully they'll be able to play for a state championship the end of the week.
Thank you. Mr. Chadwick?
I have none tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Slaven?
No local announcements, no.
Thank you. Ms. Worts?
I have nothing.
Okay. I have one, which is you probably, many of you have heard about the Showcase Wareham, which is being sponsored by the Wareham Redevelopment Authority. It's basically an all-day affair to be held on March thirtieth in the Town Hall Auditorium, and it's an invitation to all of the small businesses in Wareham and Onset Village to come and have a table and show everyone who you are and what you do. The opportunity is free, and you just need to reserve your space by going on the Wareham Redevelopment Authority website. There are flyers out, there are invitations being mailed out tomorrow to all of the small businesses that we think we know about. But if you don't get an invitation, please do ask. Space is limited because it is in the auditorium, so we will be taking you guys and gals on a first term, first come, first served basis. At the showcase, Chip Allen and Friends, Interlude, and Grace Morrison all would be performing for up to an hour. Grace Morrison is a Wareham High School graduate, and her husband and her father-in-law played pickleball with Mr. Butler, who is Chair of the Wareham Redevelopment Authority, and I I hope that all the small businesses in town take advantage of this. We already have twelve signed up. I'm guessing that the capacity of the Town Hall Auditorium is maybe fifty, maybe fifty people and/or companies that want to show their stuff, so please do sign up quickly. The flyers already been circulated through the Council on Aging and is on the town website and is probably on the Wareham Redevelopment Authority website as well. Thank you. Okay. Appointments, reappointments, and interviews, we have none. We will go to Section Six B, the application from the Church of the Good Shepherd to place signs on town property. Ms. Worts?
I move to grant permission to the Church of Good Shepherd to place signs as requested in the application, and basically they're requesting all the major places that are appropriate for signs to be.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the motion to grant? Yes, Mr. Slaven?
I believe on the listing of locations, one says Bessie Park. Uh, we don't, signs on Bessie Park are on the sign by the bridge as well. The only place that we allow is, technically, is in front of the hospital where we have a little piece of land.
Right. I will make sure that the office notes that. Thank you. Um, any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Worts?
Yes.
Delphi S. five zero zero. Ms. Worts may have a motion on the Wareham Garden Club application.
Well, uh, let's find it. Um, I move to grant permission to the Wareham Garden Club to place signs as requested on this application, and their request is for April eighteenth for Main Street in front of the Toby Hospital, Minut Ave, and Tempest Knob, Multi-Service Center, and they want to put one near the Lighthouse at the Police Station, one and two on Depot Street.
And the event of the Arbor Day celebration.
Celebration, yeah.
Which is made and seconded. Any further discussion on the motion to grant? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Worts?
Yes.
And myself, yes, five zero zero. The Cable Advisory Committee report is not available this evening, um, so I will schedule it on another meeting when the committee has had the opportunity to finish their negotiations. I now see that I would like to have Mr. Robert Costa and Al Lantini, please raise your hands. Thank you, and we will let you into the meeting. Bob Costa and Al Lantini, leave your hand up, please. We will be getting an update from the representatives of the Royal Crest Mobile Home Park regarding their purchase of the park by the residents. Mr. Costa, I believe, is the president of the association, and Mr. Lantini, I guess, is also involved. So when you are there, when you, would you identify yourselves, please, for the record? We can't see or hear you right now. Now we can hear you.
Board members, can you hear me now?
I can hear you now. Yes, sir.
I'm trying to get my video here. Unfortunately, I'm having some trouble with that. I'm sorry about that.
That's okay. Why don't you just identify yourself for the record, and if Mr. Lantini's with you, would he also identify himself?
Yes, I will. I'm Bob Costa. I'm the Vice President of the Royal Crest Residents Association.
And I'm Al Lantini. I'm the Operations Director here at Royal Crest.
Thank you. Mr. Costa, bring us up to date, sir.
Yes, I'm very happy to. It's, uh, it's a pleasure to be able to be with you this evening. We would want to give the board members an update on what we've been. We finally finished negotiations with the state after several months. Uh, long and hard language that we had to get squared away since we were the first project of this nature for the state to be involved. Uh, we, as you noticed, the park in July of last year. However, we had to go forward with a, a once, a separate 1.9 million dollar loan because the state had not completed, uh, the restriction guidelines and so forth that they needed to have in place. So in the meantime, we created a subsequent loan of 1.9 million dollars until just recently, we finally on that loan on match with restrictions.
Hang on a second, Mr. Costa. Would the rest of my board, please mute yourselves? There's some really bad echoing going on. Sorry, Mr. Costa.
That's okay.
Go ahead.
So anyhow, we closed on March first with the state, and we received the 1.9 million dollars with the thirty-year deed restriction along with other restrictions. One of the other restrictions is obviously how we market the homes in our park. Also, a, a rent increase restriction that we can't increase more than five percent on an annual basis without special permission from the state for unusual thing that comes up. Uh, in addition to that, all of our residents have signed what they call a lease rider that goes with our occupancy agreement here in the park, the leases, that, uh, commits them to a ninety-day sale, uh, uh, purchase that if a, if an owner or potential buyer wants to buy a home in our park, they have to meet, uh, guidelines as far as asset and income eligibility for the first ninety days the home is on the market. After ninety days, uh, the seller at that point in time can take an offer from an ineligible purchaser. However, that purchaser will be required to sign the lease rider committing to the same set of circumstances down the road should they sell their home, that they would first attempt to sell to a, an eligible buyer who would be a low to moderate income person with the, uh, with the assets and the financial that has been set to the eighty percent. So, uh, with all that said, our residents are excited. We've been moving ahead in our park. We've we've done some things that we think are beneficial to the, to the park and will eventually be beneficial to the community as well. With that, I'd like to just have, I'll give you an update on what we've accomplished so far.
Thank you. Mr. Lantini?
Yes, thank you. So we've worked pretty hard in the park here since July, since we purchased the park. And again, just to, uh, so everyone understands, this park is now designated by the state as a low-to-moderate-income community. So, and this is the first in the state, and obviously the first one in the town, too. So it does have some benefits for the town and certainly for the area. Um, we have, uh, right now, we have ten vacant lots that we will be, uh, putting new homes in this coming year. We'll have additional, uh, ten homes, ten, ten more families coming into park that'll be designated in that same category.
Yeah, so what we hope, right now, we have a hundred and thirty-eight residents in the park, or homes occupied, I should say. And with the additional ten homes that we will make available for low to moderate income residents in the community. Obviously, our park is a fifty-five and over community, so it's primarily for the elderly. We hope as we go forward that it will be beneficial to residents in the town who are looking to downsize or to, uh, find an affordable place to live, uh, that we would certainly be glad to welcome them into our community as long as they meet uh, those guidelines that have been established by the state. And that's pretty much where we are, and, uh, I do want to personally thank the board uh, for the level of support that you gave us. Uh, that was a big, big plus to us because getting through some of the red tape is, as you all know, when we were before you, uh, in the past, uh, that was very difficult, and your help was substantial in, uh, in getting us to get our feet on the ground, and uh, we hope that, we're very proud of what we've accomplished and and proud of our community, and we hope the town is, is proud of us as well.
Thank you, Mr. Costa. If any one of my board members has a question, please raise your hand. Mr. Slaven, you were first. You're muted, sir.
First, I'd like to thank them for what they have done and all the aggravation they had to go through. I was kind of hoping that several of the mobile home parks would follow their lead. Fortunately, they were sold to a private business. My one question, uh, has the state, when they've gone ahead and done all this work, are they considering you enlisting as affordable housing or you know, for SHI list, or you still not count it?
Uh, we're not, uh, that I'm not quite sure of. We had discussed that with them, and I believe that going forward, we will be, uh, listed as an SHI where they gave us the, uh, the money that they did and applied the thirty-year restriction on the property as well.
If you can find out for us for that, or if you need us to give you any assistance in that, please let us know because it would be very extremely helpful to the town. I will recommend to the other mobile home parks that to use you as a model going forward if at all possible. And again, I really thank you so much for the, the hard work and what you've actually done for us.
Well, it was a, it was a challenge, and as I say, the board was just, you know, very, very helpful to us, and we can't express our appreciation as well for the town supporting us. Unfortunately, I know there was another park that was coming up for sale, and the owners exercised, uh, the residents exercised their, their right to acquire, and they had a vote and unfortunately uh, turned it down, feeling that, uh, their rent increase would have been too high. It's too bad because, uh, following suit, for the ones that are left in the, in the community would be a significant benefit. I mean, we are just so pleased with what we've done and what we're going to be able to afford to our residents. That, that's, that's the big thing. We have a lot of elderly residences, as you all know, and we're doing everything in our power to find whatever resources we can, uh, to aid them through, uh, especially these difficult times with the cost of living, the prices of housing and apartments and so forth, and the lack of housing as well, needless to say. So we're going to continue to push, and, um, we've, uh, we've joined the group of Rock USA, and it includes a number of other communities that, uh, became resident-owned, and I think our voices are beginning to be, to be heard. We had some federal legislation passed recently that hopefully we'll see the benefits of that come into the first part of next year. And, uh, my understanding is that there is some other legislation being filed, so it's beginning to get recognized that, that mobile homes and manufactured housing is an affordable uh, housing situation and can really help a lot of people who are in dire need of finding housing that they can afford.
Well, I'll continue, I'll continue to lobby at the state level for all of you.
Thank you. Ms. Worts?
Uh, Bob and Al, congratulations. I met you, I think this was past early summer. You had, had a, um, outreach, you had Mr. Pacheco there, and you were all so excited about what was going to be happening. And congratulations on that. While I was at, um, your event, there was one or two people that came up to me and had asked, how do I get on committees? How do I find out what's available for committees? And, um, we did some initial conversation, but, um, what I'd like to do is extend to you and your, your whole community that should your people have an interest in participating in some of the things that many others do with the town, would love to have you and just get in touch with me or one of us, and we'll follow up with you on that.
That's awesome. I will, um, we just put together a, a community group email so that we can have better communication other than just posting in one location for our residents to see. And while we don't have, everyone doesn't have an email, I think we have probably better than three quarters, so we will make sure to keep that communication open and also let them know because I know there are residents that, uh, are interested in participating in town government and helping where they can as well. So, uh, again, we look to a, another benefit to the town as well.
Thank you, Mr. Costa.
Sure, yeah.
Oh, okay. Um, I would also like to say thank you and congratulations. It was a long haul. Um, and obviously you guys are pleased, and I'm convinced that your residents will see a long-term benefit. This is something that I have been hoping would happen, that, that mobile parks, mobile home parks, and would be counted as affordable housing is earliest eight or ten years ago when we tried twice through the town meeting, and the town meeting okayed it to have mobile units counted as affordable housing. That unfortunately died at the state level, so I'm guessing that we finally maybe got their attention. Anyway, thank you very much, Mr. Costa, Ms. Lantini, and, uh, enjoy the rest of the evening and stay safe, and don't drive into too many puzzles, puddles, because there are big ones out there. Thank you.
There are, and thank you again for the time. We really appreciate it.
All right. Thank you so much.
Okay, bye-bye.
Ms. Quirk, and I guess Mr. Schultz, would you raise your hand? It looks like it's, it says scogging, but the, raise the hands, Mr. White. Let those two individuals in, please. We're now going to hear a refined presentation, um, regarding the establishment of an alternative energy committee. Um, I have spoken with Ms. Quirk and said that the presentation is, I know, has been refined. Um, and so I don't think we will be taking any action this evening, Ms. Quirk, but we will be asking you questions if there are any, okay?
Sure.
And we did get a PowerPoint presentation, and, um, please feel free to introduce yourself first and then do screen sharing. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Sherry Quirk, and I'm here to talk about, uh, formation of an alternative energy committee. And can you all see my screen?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. So, uh, we're back to discuss, uh, a possible vote, apparently not tonight, but maybe, maybe soon on formation of an alternative energy committee. Uh, Carl Schultz is here tonight, too. He's back from Africa in more or less one piece, uh, so, um, he will, uh, be here as well. Let's see here. Okay. So, uh, what are we seeking from you all tonight? Uh, you know, we came in the fall to talk about formation of a broad alternative energy committee, looking at a number of issues and, uh, with a, with a broad scope and just I'm sorry, Tricia?
Nothing, nothing is showing except that cover page with the motorboat on it. We're not seeing any other slides.
Okay, let's see.
So why don't you just, we all have packet, we were, yeah. So why don't you just, um, talk us through basically what it is that you're looking for again for, and for the people who haven't yet heard your presentation?
Sure.
Thank you.
So, uh, slide two. What are we seeking? When we were here last, we talked about the fact that we're, uh, narrowing down from the broad, um, uh, mission that we started with last fall. Um, that mission included a number of technologies and activities. Our initial, um, mission statement is included at the back of the pack that you all have. Uh, we're here tonight to affirm focus on several key issues to ask the Select Board to establish the committee and for the board to select committees after town meeting, knowing that the board will be very busy until then. Go to slide three. What are the narrow issues we propose to focus on? You've seen this slide before. A big one is decommissioning costs. How can Wareham be assured that large ground-mounted solar projects built or planned in town will be responsibly operated and removed at the end of the useful life? This is one of the most significant issues in the green transition. Uh, where will the panels go? Into landfills as toxic waste, ordinary waste? Will they be recycled? How can Wareham protect itself financially, environmentally, and otherwise from a potentially abandoned facilities? And how can we assure that landowners, developers, and operators will do the right thing? And just to, um, uh, to refresh, refresh your memory, there are about thirty projects, uh, solar projects planned, uh, well, either approved or pending at this point. Other big issue is battery storage at solar facilities, uh, issues arising about their usage, and overall safety issues in connection with battery storage generally, with some large storage projects contemplated other places in the state. And as I said last night, time with the new incentives planned in the Inflation Reduction Act, it's likely that we'll see more of all of these projects, not less. And so we, uh, we need to make sure that we're prepared for what is coming. I've been doing some reading, uh, since our last meeting on this question of interconnection and the distribution system upgrades that will be necessary to connect solar in this area. And, you know, the upgrades really are allow, are there to allow solar projects to interconnect as well as, you know, potentially batteries. Without going into a lot of detail, um, what I've found is that the amount of anticipated solar capacity contemplating in this area on top of the thirty projects we already know about is truly staggering. So, um, this is, this is not a light question. It's, uh, it's an important one. Uh, Wareham will benefit from focus on these issues and anticipation of where problems will arise based on experience so far and diverse expertise of the committee and its supporters. We go to slide four. Uh, given the sense of urgency, we hope we are communicating and communicated last time, the Select Board asked us to return with ideas for structuring an alternative energy committee. In the meantime, we announced that the Select Board was considering this issue and asked for people to, uh, uh, indicate their interest in, uh, in volunteering for it. A number of people have come forward, you know, still would welcome additional volunteers at this point. On slide five, what, what is needed? We're here to respectfully ask you to consider constituting an alternative energy committee uh, with committee selection to proceed after town meeting. As I said, knowing that this is just a very busy time. Slide six. As the Select Board reviews volunteer applications, we would encourage you to consider that participants from different realms of experience would be useful. Go to slide seven. We set out three categories of jobs that we think would be helpful in, uh, looking at these issues. Committee members, appointed by the Select Board, expert contributors, and members of the public. There will be an overlap in that there will hopefully be experts on the committee as well as members of the public. Not every person with a contribution to make will be on the committee, especially since the committee must be composed of Wareham residents, residents, residents or citizens. I would recommend that we seek to involve experts who can help to equip the committee with knowledge as well as members of the public who have a great sense of what it is they think our town should be and should do uh, as additional resources for the committee. We go to slide eight. This slide really sets forth the categories of people who think would be helpful as committee members and expert contributors. I think you've seen uh, this slide before, uh, but, you know, it is a reminder of sort of the areas of expertise that would be helpful. I would note in particular the fire department, given their role in safety, uh, especially with, uh, battery storage issues, uh, Conservation Commission because of wetlands issues, finance and credit support because of the need for, uh, secure credit uh, as well as a number of other, uh, realms as well. Now, there are others who, uh, I would suggest would be good resources, uh, but all these people have other jobs and, um, are very busy in their other jobs, so I would suggest we consider them to be resources, and that would be the Planning Director, Director of Conservation, Building Inspector, and, uh, Communications, the town's communications capability. The importance of communications is really that we need to make sure as we're moving along and, uh, making decisions or recommendations that the problems that are being addressed and the solutions being proposed are well-understood and, um, and there is endorsement by, uh, by the community. And we would also note on the next slide that, uh, it's, would be helpful to have, uh, as liaison, uh, several of the, uh, members of the Select Board and someone who is an expert in decommissioning, especially in the realm of, um, um, of, um, recycling. The biggest issue facing, well, one of the biggest issues facing especially the solar industry is that the panels are made of, uh, precious metals and other materials that that are good to recycle. They are, they are found in small quantities and difficult to recapture. Uh, there is a lot of discussion about the need for development of uh, an industry around, uh, recycling. Uh, it, it does not exist at this point, and recycling is very expensive. So, um, if we look to, um, you know, the, um, next steps. you know, the next steps, we would ask the select board to consider forming the committee and after town meeting appointing the members, and then convening the committee to discuss organization and action plan, including renewables, I'm sorry, deliverables, whom you would like us to consider as resources and for us to develop a plan for achievement of our goals, including, you know, a timeline for preparation of bylaws and explanatory paper describing the problems identified and how they're solved. And with that, I would welcome your questions.
Thank you. If you have a question, please raise your hand. No? Okay. Ms. Quirk, thank you very much. What I really like is your slide that you didn't even really touch on, which is slide thirteen, which is the mission, which I think is a very helpful one in terms of seeing where you have focused your efforts. So I thank you very much for the work that you've obviously put into this already and the research that you obviously already done on it as well. I'm guessing that we won't be putting it on the agenda for maybe a couple of weeks, only because I know next week is a very busy agenda already. I, I would like to see you get going sooner than later. That's my personal opinion because every day that we wait, you may have, you know, some other issues that come up, but I will, I'll, I'll sit down with you and talk about that if that's okay with you.
That would be great.
If that's okay with my board members. I, I don't want to rush into anything, but I also think that this is a pretty well laid out plan, if you will, and I, I would like to proceed with it. Okay?
Very good. I'll, I'll be in touch.
All right. Thank you so much. Enjoy, enjoy the rest of the evening and thank you for coming to present to us, even though it was a nice motorboat picture. Sorry about that.
Oh, well.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Fitch and Meyer, Mr. Camerano, if you are in the audience, could you please raise your hand so that Mr. White could let you into the meeting? We would be looking to have you do the Upper Cape Regional Technical High School Budget Presentation. Mr. Camerano and Mr. Fitch and Meyer, if you are here, please raise your hand. One more time, Mr. Fitch and Meyer and Mr. Camerano. Okay, let's go to Mr. DeAndrea and Ms. Flynn. Please raise your hand. Mr. DeAndrea and Ms. Flynn, please raise your hand. You will be speaking to the issue of the Wareham Roof Replacement Project and the McKinney Vento Funds Transfer. Mr. White, if you would let those two individuals in, thank you. Ooh. Mr. Campina, I'm sorry, I skipped over you. I'll come back to you right after them. Sorry. If you would identify yourself for the record, please, Mr. DeAndrea and Ms. Flynn.
Hi, everyone. My name is Matt DeAndrea and I am Superintendent of Schools.
Ms. Flynn?
Hi, good evening. I'm Kristen Flynn, I'm the Director of Finance for Wareham Public Schools.
Okay. You apparently have two articles. One would be the transfer of the McKinney Vento money and the roof replacement project. Could you speak to them individually, please? Oh, and Mr. Mr. White, would you let Mr. Brazali in as well? Chairman of the School Committee. Thank you, Mr. Brazali. Go ahead, Matt.
Okay, may I share my screen?
Certainly.
Okay, so this is the presentation, I believe, that was sent to you. And so I'll just go through this. This gives you a little bit of a history of the school constructed in nineteen fifty-six. There was an addition put on the school in two thousand and four and the, the existing part of the building was renovated. Apparently, we have about four hundred and fifty students in the building and it's one hundred and sixty-seven thousand square feet. This summer, the summer of twenty twenty-three, we will be replacing the roof in this section here, section F and section K. That is the Warren article that was passed at Fall Town Meeting. One point five million dollars to replace these two parts of the roof. There is, this is the section where there is significant amount of leakage and so that is, it's great to be getting those parts done sooner rather than later. This slide shows where we have identified leaks in the building that is actually leaking into the school. So you can see the significant areas. All of the sections of the roof, however, have failed. There's water in all of them and sooner or later that's going to end up in the building. So it most definitely needs a complete, completely new roof. The next slides show you some of the pooling of water, standing water that is on the roof. The, it is not pitched correctly. It's not draining. And of course, this eventually works its way into the building. You can see in those three slides. And also, there are several areas in the school where it comes down and into the building. This slide is our reimbursement rate certification from MSBA, which says that we will receive seventy-one point five eight percent reimbursement on sections of the roof that are reimbursable. And the sections of the roof that are reimbursable are on this slide. What qualifies a section as being reimbursable is how old the, the roof is in that section and it has to be thirty years old or older. The slide shows the sections that are non-reimbursable because they're not old enough. So section F and K will be done, the yellow section will be done in the summer of twenty twenty-three. And the remaining sections, the green sections, will be replaced in the summer of twenty twenty-four. This is a cost breakdown of the work that will be done in the summer of twenty twenty-three. The one point five million dollars was appropriated at the Fall Town Meeting. The owner, owner's project manager contract is a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. The architect, a hundred and seventy thousand, two hundred dollars. The bid was awarded to Cape Way Roofing, seven hundred and twenty-one thousand, six hundred dollars for a total of one million, twenty-one thousand, eight hundred dollars. There's a saving of four hundred and seventy-eight thousand, two hundred. That money will be held for contingency and any minor costs such as bidding and roof testing and things of that nature. Cost breakdown for the summer of twenty twenty-four project. The entire project, eight million, nine hundred and ninety-one thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars. The summer of twenty twenty-three, one point five million. I just spoke to that. So the, the summer of twenty twenty-four, seven point four nine one million dollars. The reimbursement based on the reimbursement rate and the sections that are reimbursable to the town will be two million, two hundred and thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and forty-seven dollars. The total town share after reimbursement, six million, seven hundred and fifty-six thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars. That may, that may be less depending on how much of that four hundred plus thousand dollars that we're holding for contingency in use. And this is just another way of looking at the breakdown. The summer, one point five million, how much is reimbursed? It's going to be town and the town's total cost.
So, Mr. DeAndrea and Ms. Flynn and Mr. Brazali, you will have five minutes only to present this to the town meeting. So you're going to have to shorten up your presentation. But could you answer me the one question that I have? What exactly is being asked for at this town meeting? Of the, the several things that you just showed us?
What's being asked for at this town meeting will be the seven million, four hundred and ninety-one thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
Thank you. Do any of my members have any question? Mr. Bessie, go ahead, and then Mr. Slaven after you.
So I was just looking at the, at the cost breakdown. Maybe I'm missing something. Maybe you can explain it a little bit better for me. But you say that there's a, there's a rebate back of seventy-one point something percent. But when I look at the number, the total number of the phase two of the project, which is where all the reimbursable numbers and money is coming from, I don't get seventy-one percent with the two million that's coming back. Can you explain that to me a little bit more?
Sure. The, 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 it's only, we're only reimbursed on the work done on the sections that are reimbursable. So I, I'm sorry, I'll share my screen again. So going back to this slide, the, the cost to replace the roof on these sections, we get reimbursed on. The cost to do the work on these sections, we do not get reimbursed on. So the reimbursement for these sections is that two million dollars.
So is that, so, so then if it breaking down, so what is it like three, three and a half million dollars for those sections roughly? So four million dollars and then, and then the rest is appropriated. Okay. I just, like I said, I just saw it and I didn't, you know, I'm looking at seventy-one percent and I'm like, those numbers don't make seventy-one percent to me, but thank you for explaining them.
Understood, understood.
Uh, Mr. Slaven, sorry.
First question, simple thing. Where are you, where are we coming up with the money for the six million plus? That you're asking for? For the rest of the roofs that this is town share?
You're asking me where it's coming from?
Yes.
Absolutely. You're requesting it.
I, I don't know. I don't know the town's finances enough to, to answer that question.
So are we looking for a debt exclusion for the taxpayers on this?
If, if necessary, I leave that to the town leaders.
Just so you, and we have some major expenses coming through and we can only borrow so much money, people.
I, I understand, Mr. Slaven. We have a roof that has failed, that's leaking into the building. I, I would, I would be remiss if I did not bring this to you.
I agree. Unfortunately, we have water pollution control facility, police station, everything else. You only have so many dollars to go around. We're going to have to figure this one out.
Do any of my other members have any questions on this particular issue? Could you, thank you, Ms. Is Mr. Tryon with you from the school? Yes, do you want him in the meeting?
Yes.
Mr. Mr. White, would you let Mr. Tryon in, please? Would you speak to the McKinney Vento Funds, please, that transfer request?
Sure.
One of you?
I can do that.
Thank you.
So McKinney Vento, just for people who might not know what it is, it's a federal law that outlines requirements for schools around when students become homeless. When a, when a family becomes homeless, any student in that family can stay in their home public school regardless of what town that family is staying in while homeless. If the student is going to stay in his enrolled home district, the school's home district and the school district in which the family is staying are required to share the cost of transportation to and from school for the students in that family while the family is homeless. The state of Massachusetts provides reimbursement for a percentage of these transportation costs. Previous years, the reimbursement from the state of Massachusetts has been between thirty-four and forty-two percent. This year's reimbursement for Wareham is about thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars. This money has been sent to the town and requires a town meeting vote to move the money to the school district. The money would go into our transportation revolving account and that would be used to offset transportation costs.
Thank you. Any questions from my members, Ms. Words?
I have a couple of questions, Mr. DeAndrea. How many students are we servicing under this situation right now?
I don't know the exact number. I know that last year are we spent about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on homeless transportation.
For how many students?
Yeah. Kristen, do you happen to know how many?
Um, this year, I, for this, for that hundred and fifty thousand, I can get that and, and let you know, but for this year, I believe, you know, it's, it's, it's of course somewhat transient. And so this year, I think there's been about, I'd say, ten to twelve students this current year in fiscal twenty-three. Having not been here in fiscal twenty-two, I can certainly get that number for you. I don't have it right now.
Thank you.
I, I have an additional question. And that is, and I'm not trying to be facetious. What is our definition of homeless?
We have to use the definition that the that the state provides.
And that is?
That is that it needs to be, they use, I'm going to have to.
I, I, I think some of the words are that you're lacking adequate fixed housing and it arises because of some event, whether it's an economic hardship, perhaps a family situation. And so it is quite broad. It's again adequate and fixed and fixed means that of course there's, you know, that it's, it's not just a, you know, say a tent outdoors or something like that, but it's adequate and fixed to, to, for a student, a child to, to lay their head down at night. I think those are some of the words that are used in the definition.
Thank you. Mr. Slaven?
First question. McKinney Vento, part of it, my understanding from a while ago was that we could have students placed in our district from other areas, moved here, whatever. And if they so requested, we would have to basically transport them back to the school system they came from, which is part of those costs, which adds, you know, substantial amounts of money. My only concern, and unfortunately we don't get enough total, is that when we take money like this and we're putting into the transportation revolving account, I do go through the transportation revolving account looking at it because there has been abuses to that account over the years.
Mr. Slaven, if you're clicking your pen, please stop.
Key, sorry. So my question is, how do we know, how do you know that, that say thirty-five, forty thousand dollars, that money goes directly only to those expenses and not other places in the transportation revolving account where monies were expended out of?
Can neither one of you answer that question?
I'm, I'm not sure I understood. Could you please repeat it?
If say we, we'll just use the number of thirty-five thousand. How do we know that that thirty-five thousand is only spent and expensed against the actual money that McKinney Vento is supposed to cover? Because the transportation revolving account covers more than, you know, a lot of other expenses.
Right. It's used for transportation of our homeless students is also used for trans, uh, transportation repairs. So it, it, there's no way of actually guaranteeing that that is going to go to to the homeless transportation, but it's going to go to transportation. We have lots of expenses in our transportation department. And this money would helps to, to make sure we cover those costs.
I would suggest, it's just my suggestion, that maybe you want to set up a revolving account for the actual expenses that McKinney Vento covers to show how short we are to go back to the state where we sit there and myself and other people arguing that this money is completely insufficient that we have some actual leverage that we can show. Because right now with the money just going into a transportation revolving account, there's no way to know what the expenses are.
Um, I would ask that Ms. Flynn, maybe you could work um, on resolving that question for Mr. Slavin. I know it's one that he's had before, so the the specific. He's right, we have a whole lot of unfunded mandates from the state, and this clearly is one of them. And the only way we can get more money would be to absolutely be able to segregate the expenses that it is being applied against.
Well, the the homeless transportation expenses are segregated on the Department of Education's end of year report. So those are reported separately under one of the schedules for homeless transportation. They ask that we report the number. That's how um, Dr. Deandrea had that one hundred and fifty thousand dollar figure for you for last year.
Is that money? Are those figures the figures that you get from the accounting office?
Those are figures that we get from the business office when when we run our reports based on the expenditures, purchase orders, invoices for last year, so.
And I think what Mr. Slavin is asking is that you share that information with the town accountant's office so that that information is segregated. If you're already providing a report to the state, it should be pretty easy to provide that information to the town accountant as well.
Oh, absolutely. And I believe she gets a, I believe she gets a copy of that report or can.
Yeah, I I don't know.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Ms. Words? You're muted, Ms. Words.
Good, my head needed a chance to think. I'm not an accountant, but these numbers and the things that I sign off on for the school every week, the numbers just boggle my mind. At some point, I'd like to sit down and look at the number of kids that we're paying money for them to go to where they want to go to school or vice versa, those we're paying for who decide they want to come here. And I really want to see what the analysis is between how much it costs to pay for that to move versus how much it would cost to get them an apartment in where they want to live. I mean, I this the numbers just boggle me. There's got to be an answer that's more cost effective.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? No? Um, yes.
I I just wanna uh, uh, Ms. Words, I I can get you the number. I'll get you a definite number tomorrow as how many students that we have that are homeless that we're transporting. And the words that the state used that that um, Kristen Flynn was referring to is the hu- housing has to be fixed, adequate and regular. And I'm sure you could debate about what's fixed, adequate and regular all day, but that's how that's those are the words they use.
Thank you very much, and thank you for joining us this evening. Yes, Mr. Slavin.
Just to help Tricia and everybody else to understand, we could have one student transferred into our district that has specialties, et cetera. It could cost the school department a quarter of a million dollars a year.
I know that.
Guys, we're way off topic. We had two things on the agenda. One is the McKinney Vento and one's the roof, and I think that they've addressed those issues. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Mr. Campina, would you raise your hand, please? I apologize, Mr. Campina, for not you, because you're, the entry for your is of your presentation is a short one, so I apologize to you. Mr. Campina will be speaking about the Wareham Water Pollution Control Facility Enterprise Fund article, which is on the town meeting.
Miss, Miss White side.
Yep.
Do we want to make a motion to recommend favorable the two articles that align with the school?
No, we're not. We're not there yet.
Okay, all right.
No, that's we're later on in the meeting. We will possibly discuss actions on this.
Thank you.
Mr. Campina, again, I apologize. I I'm really sorry. It's I saw you first because we the in the the attendees come in alphabetically, so I saw you and I just, I I apologize. And Mr. Gubert will not be joining you this evening. Go ahead.
No apologies necessary. Um, good evening, members of the select board. I I believe the question is on Article ten, uh, which which talks about the enterprise fund, the transfer of funds from the general fund into the enterprise fund.
So. Yeah, can you if you, we really need an explanation from you so that the three new members understand what the purpose of the fund is, how it, I think you're probably gonna do that, but I just want to make sure that you do.
I I'll try. I'll do it simply, and then I've got a lot of backup if there's specific questions, we'll try to answer them. But basically, it's it's a it's a simple business model. Um, it's a town department that is self-sufficient. We provide a service. There's a a fee charged for that service, and those funds are used to uh, finance or to operate that service. It it so I I call it self-supporting department. Uh, it's an accounting method uh, where a fee is charged for services provided. And in this case, it'd be collecting, transporting and treating wastewater from the many homes, businesses and industry in the town of Wareham. Um, town, and there's many ways to do it. The town of Wareham has decided that a hundred percent of the fees collected will support the enterprise. Now, as an option, it's say will support through the enterprise eighty percent and twenty percent will be done by the town. Um, but the town backed when they voted in, I wasn't here. They decided that a hundred percent of the fees collected goes to operate or support the enterprise fund. Um, so what happens is a budget is created within that enterprise fund, um, which has um, again, categories, operation, uh, there's there's capital and there's also uh, debt that is created in the line, line after line after line. It's submitted to the town administrator, reviews it, that's it. Um, and that includes all the operating costs, the debt, as I said, direct and indirect costs, et cetera, et cetera. And the town, town, uh, the town administrator takes those funds and he adds it to the budget um, that you get at town meeting. Um, and he puts out a big, great workbook and explains it in detail. I think he works in conjunction with the finance committee, does a great job, and then explains everything, all the lines, specifically what's going on within that budget. Um, and then it's voted upon at the town meeting. Uh, this is a mass general law, the uh, enterprise funding. Um, it's for you, I believe it's a chapter forty four, uh, section fifty three F and a half. So it's an accounting uh, of funds collected to operate a service within the town. In this particular case, it's it's a it's a wastewater facility. It could be a golf course. It could be water, it could be anything. Um, set up by the state allows the town to uh, have an entity self-supported. A- and and that's pretty much in a nutshell. There's a lot of things that go, any surplus funds goes into the into what they call retained earnings. Retained earnings can be used for capital or to offset fees, as many things. But all that funds, if there's a surplus, stays within the enterprise fund. Um, and that's all explained. The town administrator puts out a report itemizing everything within that um, within that fund uh, of the enterprise.
Thank you.
And that's it in a nutshell.
Very good. Any questions from my board members? Nope. Mr. Slavin? You muted, sir.
Uh, one question in particular, yeah, you made a statement that the enterprise fund, the monies coming in covers, you know, the cost of the uh, facility, et cetera. Uh, we really can't say that anymore because we're looking at a thirty six million dollar project to keep the facility up and running properly. So the monies that go in don't even come even close to what we're looking at over the next five, four or five years.
Well, it's a budget, so the money coming in will pay for the debt service of borrowing that money. So the debt service is not paid for by the town, it's paid for by the enterprise, which is a, you know, the debt. So let's say that we borrowed thirty six million, the debt's a million and a half a year. The enterprise through the through the fees will pay that debt. The thirty six million will be borrowed from the state revolving fund, et cetera, et cetera. But it's not the town or the general fund or the taxpayers that pays back that debt. The debt is paid by the sewer users who pay a sewer user fee, and that's just part. So what I'm saying, as I'm not talking about totality of 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 uh, money, I'm talking about the funding of the debt, the operation uh, and the capital, et cetera, et cetera. That's all paid back by the enterprise.
Well, the monies you have coming in through the EDU, a lot of this debt and stuff doesn't cover that way. All I'm trying to get at is that we're looking at stuff that's not gonna be covered. We're gonna obviously have to have a Philly sludge debt exclusion again. In order for the plant to keep running.
But you know better than I, but it'll be a borrowed money through the state revolving fund, uh, mostly through the bipartisan bill. The town will will borrow the those funds. Uh, and they'll be paid back, those funds will be paid back through the enterprise fund. So the the money collected through the fees will pay back the debt. Yes, you're absolutely right.
And again, the those particular funds that we're talking about, there's no guarantee, number one, we get them. And number two, we only probably get a percentage of what we need.
Thank you. Any other questions, the gentleman? Nope, okay. Mr. Campaign, again, I apologize for um, keeping you waiting a little bit longer than I should have.
No apology necessary. Thank you for having me, and good night to y'all. Thank you.
All right, good night to you. Mr. Buckminster, would you raise your hand, please? Mr. Buckminster is going to be addressing two um, articles. They both will be. Um, one of them is going to actually be on the special town meeting, which we haven't called, we've called for it, but we haven't opened it yet. Um, and then there's some fee updates that we also need to be discussing. Um, the reason that the information that he originally gave to us is going to be moved to the special. We it's on the uh, regular town meeting, but because he changed the substance of the request for the warrant article, that warrant article on the regular town meeting will be passed over. We will not take action on it. The article will appear on the special town meeting. Mr. Buckminster, good evening. Could you identify yourself and explain what it is you're looking for?
Hi, good evening. Gary Buckminster, Director of Natural Resources. Um, I'm sorry for the change on the article. I apologize. Um, back uh, just over, just about two years ago, we purchased um, uh, some motors for a patrol boat, uh, primary boat, and due to obvious um, troubles with trying to get product and everything else, uh, there was quite the time built. So we ordered the engines in uh, July of twenty twenty one. And they just showed up now at the. There was no options of uh, price protections or anything from the from the manufacturers. So unfortunately, with inflation, we've hit a increase in the the amount of the um, engines, so we had to increase uh, the change order on our our bid process that the motors did go up uh, ten thousand dollars, which is reflected in my article. So I have a um, warrant article that is requesting eighteen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Originally, it was just eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Um, forty seven hundred and fifty is for our patrol boat dockage. We have to utilize a marina to keep one of our boats at. Um, so that just covers our our boating season. Um, we also are looking to get some supplies to build some kayak racks, some dinghy racks, uh, things that people can store, uh, different um, Allen devices on and renting out the spots for the seasons. Uh, we're gonna target some of the different uh, local areas on our our public beaches and uh, try to get some kind of uh, organized cleanup of of what's been going on with people leaving the boats all over the place. So and then my explanation was the ten thousand for the um, the changing cost for the motors. We were at uh, I believe it was sixty three thousand five hundred for the motor replacement. Uh, that was complete with controls, gauges, all the um, all the labor, everything. So unfortunately, we do have to increase because the the engines themselves have gone up significantly and same thing with all the components, so.
Okay, so actually, having this put on the special is probably more beneficial to the department because it's it's in process.
It is, yes.
Yeah, okay, excellent. Any questions of Mr. Buckminster on this? Mr. Slavin? You're muted, sir. You're muted.
Uh, you've answered, you've basically responded to where I was gonna get at. Everything is going up constantly, as we all know. And uh, putting this on the special makes it a lot easier for Mr. Buckminster because we have no idea when he's gonna pay for these things because they're not gonna give him the the motors for free, pay for it some other time, so this will work well. Plus the fact that now it goes on a special, other projects that he wants to do, have money, he won't have to wait till after July first to do things.
Right, thank you.
Big benefit for us too. Thank you very much.
Excellent. Um, would you care to address your twenty twenty three fee update request?
Yes, if you're uh, guys are okay with going right into it?
Yeah, we, yeah, we um.
I'm obviously required to uh, go through and provide a um, provide the board with a breakdown of our current rates and and proposals and some changes and increases. And um, uh, before you, you'll ha- you'll see the the original breakdowns and cargo service permits. Uh, a couple of new things that are gonna be coming into play, dinghy dock permits I'd like to um, look at doing a increase on. We're also gonna be doing uh, beach dinghies, so if there's a boat on the beach, it's gonna have to get a permit strictly for just getting your morning and coming back. Uh, we're having dozens upon dozens of boats showing up in small areas and they're taking over entire sections of the beach. Uh, we don't know who they are. We have kayaks drifting off. We have, it's 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 a mess. Um, people have been very good about getting their stuff off this year. We did still end up removing probably fifty boats uh, somewhere in there, but uh, it it was a significant decrease in what was actually out there, so. Everything has been removed now, so we're gonna start fresh. People are coming in and uh, it has to be organized. Um, these rates uh, will identify the different costs. Looking at the kayak racks at a hundred dollars uh, for the season, and that allows a person to uh, to kayak onto the rack for the entire season, they can lock it, they can utilize it, you can see it in a lot of different programs. You see it in some of the town parks, uh, neighboring communities are utilizing it. Um, we're closer to the last town that is doing this stuff, and I feel it's a nice uh, feature that we can have. And it's, you know, it's obviously recreation has boomed since uh, COVID time, and it's still finding it's a uh, it's an affordable activity for people, and if you can provide them some space to be able to get to the boats and and uh, reorganize and utilize this uh. Structure, I've uh, tried to keep my rates within the uh, the surrounding towns. Our last uh, rate change was twenty eighteen from twenty seventeen going into twenty eighteen. Uh, morning application fees, we're going to applications, we're gonna go to fifteen uh, and to stay on the uh, waiting lists. Uh, we're going from five to fifteen as well. Um, I think it just keeps, if if it's a little more expensive, people take it a little more seriously, and I, people tend to just throw applications in. And then we go into the applications and some of them, they just, they forgot they apply. They they're chasing everybody around because this is not on their radar at all, so. Um, those will be the first batch. The launch service, uh, I'd like to keep the season pass still at one twenty five. Um, the round trips, uh, I'd like to go to thirty five from twenty seven. Uh, the single round trip from three dollars to five dollars. Uh, the dock to dock trips, we have a lot of uh, people, we're picking people up in uh, groups now that are on private docks. Um, dock club, marinas, and they they're going dock to dock instead, which is pretty nice. It's giving people an opportunity to uh, go around Otso Harbor and and get dropped off at the places they want to, they can walk in, they they get to Otso, they walk around, they go to the village, and they get back on the boat and they go home. So uh, we're still looking at, I know change to that, it's three dollars per person. Um, we still no change, under twelve is free as long as it was a parent's. Transient mornings, I I right now on our docks, uh, we usually go like two dollars a foot. I'd like to increase it to three dollars a foot. Uh, and the transient morning rates uh, are thirty five currently. I'd like to increase it five dollars to forty. Um, the part of that is we we've ended up having to pay for uh, more of the docked program. It's actually been a great program because a lot of people will get our kids more mornings more, but it also comes at a cost. So this has just been a balance off the cost that we're facing and doing. Um, one of the things that we were requesting in the uh, change in the bylaws was a removal. Uh, we have to go out and start taking rowboats and dinghies off beaches if we request the stuff to be moved during a storm. Uh, we're looking at rates to cover that, so we're looking at the uh, we have to come out and remove the boat. It's a twenty five dollar fee, a five dollar per day um, uh, storage fee, so everything would have to be paid before they can reclaim the boat. We have to bring in um, we have to bring in identification to show it was their boat and there. If we order during a storm and we actually have to take time out of doing everything else to chase or go around, uh, the fee would be a hundred dollars, uh, if we have to remove it off the beach. Um, and then going into the rates that I'd like to go and go into the twenty twenty four season, and if that's able to proceed, I would like to uh, set the rates going in uh, for I would, I'd like to uh set the rates going in uh for twenty twenty-four hurting season, if that's a possibility.
Okay, so what action do you need from us?
Uh, I, I, you have to either accept the rates or uh we can come back with some different ones, or if you like some changes to it. The board has to either accept or not accept the rates.
Okay, great. Mr. Chadwick, first of all, who's playing keyboard tap, tap? Cause it, all of us are hearing somebody on a keyboard. No? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Chadwick.
Uh, Mr. Buckminster, um, back to the boats that you said you collected at the end of the season. Uh, off the beaches and those are all like the dinghies and small boats and stuff. Um, now I remember growing up on an island, you know, in Antarctica, they did that every year. Uh, and then they took them if nobody collected them and sold them. Um, do we plan on doing that to kind of help and offset costs?
I, I mean, you're not, it's a tough thing to do because it's still property. I mean, there are some abandoned ones that you know have been there for many years. Uh, and they're in just such bad condition that I think a lot of, a lot of the ones that we cannot track down are, are, are so bad. They would just be crushed. Um, it's, it's a small collection and it, they're, everything is really in bad condition. I mean, if we're able to, I mean, there's some process they have to go through to ensure that it's not, you know, because we're not. You know, it's not a given up though, we have to do the research and try to locate an owner, and if there's no owner, then the, the people that would buy these boats. Have to go through another process with the environmental police to get them uh renumbered and it, it can be. Not quite worth the process to, to get this done. A lot of the stuff that we end up getting rid of is just terrible condition, so.
With the stuff that you guys are, are grabbing, um with the, the ones that are actually numbered. Do we find them for not picking them up in time, or do we have a plan to start finding them?
Well, that's, that, that will be going into play, so everything going back on, anything going back onto the beaches now, we designate locations. Um, and most of the towns, they just offer a, an area, and then we make a determination when it's full. Um, and there's a permit, like, like for us, we're just gonna look at certain areas that are going to just work on the mooring fields. That are living close distance of it, and that's within the uh broken down section of the bylaw. So I wouldn't, I don't think we're gonna see anywhere near the boat collection that we have seen the past few summers here. Um. On that end of it, I think, I, you know, we're gonna be making uh money just enough to manage the program. But it also allows us to identify it, move it, set regulation, um, go from there with it. But money wise, it's, it's not a lot, it's just, it's a lot of it just to keep, you know, managing all this and make sure we stay where, where we're at.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions? No. Um, I will entertain a motion to approve the fees as submitted.
So moved.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. This would become effective immediately, Mr. Buckminster.
Um, the, the first, the twenty-two, twenty twenty-three second will be, uh, if we'd like to go for the, the twenty twenty-four section on the bottom. Uh, that's, that's breakdown of the actual physical harvest service permits for your mornings.
Okay, so, but we could have one motion for, for both sets, right?
Yes, I just, I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Put it all out in the air.
Yeah, so we have a motion and a second to approve as presented, and the comparable figures from other towns are on the back. So we've had an opportunity to look at what the market is locally. Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I will go. Slaven?
Just wanna make sure that in, the motion actually is for twenty-three and twenty-four, since he's got a broken note.
Mr. Bessie, could you be specific about your motion, please?
Uh.
Or Mr. Chad, whoever may.
Yeah, uh, so moved for twenty-three and twenty-four.
Thank you. Is there a second?
You know, yes, second.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Myself, yes, five zero zero. Thank you, Mr. Buckminster, appreciate it.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you. We will not be taking any action on the other thing because that warrant hasn't opened, but you know, so when it does, we will be taking action. Okay, next we will go to Mr. Slaven, who is going to address item. AI, which is um authorizing the chair to provide a letter regarding some possible new legislation. Mr. Slaven, please.
Thank you. As everybody knows, we're looking at uh infrastructure needs, the town of Wareham, we have a police uh study committee. That's been going for over three years now, and uh we'll basically be hearing, uh, I think on Thursday. Numbers, et cetera, which are gonna uh be difficult in this particular, with two bills, one's at the House, one's the Senate. The sister bills, and they actually are for infrastructure for municipalities, which include fire department, fire stations, town halls. Council on Agings, uh, police stations, et cetera. Uh, they're going, the way this is written out. They are going to use a system similar to what the school uses under the MSBA program, which pays, as we know, as we heard early today. Seventy percent approximately of the cost of doing a project, wherever the costs are qualified. Uh, I think as far as what we're looking at on the town side, uh projects should easily qualify at the max. Because there's not gonna be that many exceptions to the rule. Um, it's extremely important that this may be a one-time opportunity. To get things done that we planned to do, that we actually voted on, you know, a few months back that we were gonna try and do. And because of the cost of everything involved, uh, there is really no way we can do things on our own at this point realistically. So uh, we have the Mass Municipal Associations decided to take this on as well, and it's one of their key pieces. They're sponsoring and pushing for. I will be on next week, on Wednesday, uh, on the Serpent Commission. I'll be asking Serpent, which will be twenty-six other communities to do exactly the same thing, and each one of them also write their senator. And their state representative to support this as well. Uh, it's extremely important that we start working on this. And after uh the meeting on Thursday, next, the twenty-first, I'm hoping that basically. Uh, the board of select decides to go ahead and try and get together what I call shovel-ready projects, and it's the only way we'll be able to get this qualified as well. So we have a lot of work to do, folks.
But what we can do tonight is to authorize the chair to write letters to the Senate, to the House and MMA. To, in support of those two bills, and the numbers are on your agenda. Is that correct?
That's exactly what we need to do.
Okay, any questions? I'll accept a motion.
Go ahead, Alan.
No, just motion so made, it's, it's straightforward.
Right, thank you. Is there a second motion, made and seconded to authorize the chair, et cetera? Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
And myself, yes, thank you very much. The letter has been drafted and I'll get it out tomorrow. Next is the appointment of town council. Under the bylaws, as noted in your agenda, we make this appointment every year. I'll accept a motion.
Make a motion that we appoint Mr. Bowen as town council according to town bylaw, division one, article three, section one.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to appoint Mr. Bowen. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Myself, yes, thank you very much. And now we will go back to. Um. Any articles that you would like to recommend favorable action on? So that we can get those to Mr. Pidgen and his committee. The recommendations that you would make tonight would be. Um, item ten and, uh, let's see, number ten on the grid. Um. Number eleven, not num, and not number fifteen, and not number sixteen. So the motion, if, if you want to have, for instance, item nine. Make, this board would be making a favorable action to the town meeting. We've already put it on the warrant, we are now, we, our recommendation for favorable action would be before the town meeting. You, you guys all get that, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so um, we have, we can't do number nine because we didn't, didn't hear from that, so number ten. Um, is there a motion for favorable action?
Make a motion. I move to recommend favorable action to the town meeting on article ten, the WPCF Enterprise Fund.
There's a second, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion on the motion? Should we be for favorable action on the town meeting? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Abstain.
Uh, Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
And myself, yes, so four zero one, thank you very much. Next, I would accept a motion on the article eleven. Community Preservation Fund Reserves.
I move to recommend favorable action to the town meeting on article eleven, FY twenty twenty-four. Community, Community Preservation Fund Reserves.
Again.
Motion made and seconded to recommend favorable action. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
And myself, yes, five zero zero. Next, I will accept a motion on article twelve, Woodland Cove, phase two.
I move to recommend favorable action to the town meeting on article twelve, Woodland Cove, phase two.
Is there a second to that motion? Hearing none, I will make a second to the motion. Motion is made and seconded to recommend favorable action. I will now go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
No.
Mr. Slaven?
Absolutely not.
Mr. Chadwick?
No.
Ms. Wertz?
No.
And myself, no. Uh, uh, thank you very much, so that it is zero five zero, okay? I will accept a motion on article thirteen, Sawyer Conservation Area.
I make a mo- I move to recommend favorable action to the town meeting on article thirteen, Sawyer Conservation Area.
Is there a second? Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion to recommend favorable action to the town meeting? Hearing none, I'll go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Myself, yes, five zero zero. Thank you. I will accept a motion on article fourteen, Depot Auto, please.
I move to recommend favorable action to the town meeting on article fourteen, Depot Auto LLC, Onset Train Station.
Is there a second? Motion made and seconded to recommend favorable action on article fourteen. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Abstain.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
And myself, yes, four zero one, thank you very much. Ms. Wertz, I will accept a motion on article fifteen. Uh, we're gonna skip over that one tonight.
Mm-hmm.
We're gonna go to. Uh, we're gonna have to skip over article sixteen. I'll accept a motion on article, we won't do that one. Article um eighteen, please, Ms. Wertz.
I move to recommend favorable action to the town meeting on article eighteen, Wareham Middle School Roof Replacement Project.
Is there a second to the motion? Motion made and seconded to recommend favorable action. Um, there is an explanation in the packet which was provided. Um, is there any further discussion on the motion?
So just to be, just to be clear, um, are we, are we talk, is this for the totality of the project? The seven plus million dollars that they're asking for, or just the going forward on the one point five million for this year?
They have in here, there, it's the seven million four hundred ninety-one thousand three hundred seventy-seven dollars. Which is the, this, basically all of it, except for the stuff that's already under construction or under, yes.
But. Go ahead, go ahead, Alan.
Some of it is um able to be uh repaid.
So, but we still don't, but we still don't know where those funds are gonna come from, right? That's something that has to be, to be determined, right?
Um. That actually, it is on the ballot as well as, um, it would go on the ballot for a. Debt of some sort. Mr. Slaven?
Uh, my comment would be because they haven't really sat down and they threw it back at the town saying it's your problem. To me, it's the school problem, and I would ask that we vote no action on this particular article. Until we know what the, where the money's coming from.
I would second that.
Okay, so um, what, what they have asked for on the ballot question would be an exemption on a bond issue. So um, Ms. Wertz, did you make a motion?
I haven't made a motion, yes.
So good, all right, so I was just double checking. Um, so do you want to, Mr. Slaven, do you wanna make a motion?
Make a motion that we basically recommend no action at this time until we actually have financial numbers, oh, we're gonna pay for this.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, so um, all is in favor of no action at this time. Um, I'm going to go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
My yes is sort of like Jared's, it's yes.
And mine is a yes, thank you very much, five zero zero. Article nineteen, which is the transfer of the McKinney Vento Funds, and that's approximately the thirty-three thousand dollars or whatever it was. You have a motion, please?
Make a, I move to recommend favorable action to the town meeting on article nineteen, transfer of McKinney Vento Funds. To transportation revolving account.
Second.
Motion made and seconded for favorable recommendations. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Abstain.
Mr. Slaven?
Uh, I'm gonna vote yes, because we'll get the information we need.
Uh, Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
And myself, yes, four zero one, abstention, thank you very much. Article number nineteen, please, no, excuse me, number twenty, which the terminate, it was a citizen's petition, Ms. Wertz may have.
Yep, I move to recommend favorable action to the town meeting on article twenty, terminate contract. Twenty twenty-two dash zero zero one, sore Swift Beach Citizens Petition.
May I have a second to the motion?
Second.
Thank you. The motion is to recommend favorable action on this citizen's petition, which is before the town meeting. Any further discussion on the motion?
I, I just wanna, oh, go ahead, Alan.
Um. This is uh basically, I understand really strongly why the citizens are upset with this. It goes way back to when the project was done, and unfortunately, the consultant, you know, who did the project. Uh, really hindsight's easy, but the bottom line is never should have built the way it was done. We're suffering here, we're suffering at Otso because we're putting pipes underwater and stuff. And uh, these people do have a right to complain, very much like Agawam Beach did, and also Oakdale on sewer projects. Um, and I, I would basically, at this point, I think the board should all abstain. Uh, the citizens basically have a right to do this, and I think we have to take a, we can take a positive or a negative stance. But it's really the, the citizens' right on this one. I don't think unless we, our voting is individual, is that a select? I, I think personally, I'm gonna abstain and let it go through with town meeting, whichever way it goes.
Mr. Bessie?
Uh, I mean, I, I, I have the same sentiment as, as Alan does. Um, it's, you know, something that, you know, the citizens have the right to do, and I think it just needs to go to the floor as that. And um, my, my vote would be to abstain also.
Would you like me to put it off a week so that you have an opportunity to think about the vote and possibly talk with some of the petitioners? Yes, that's a great idea, Ms. Whiteside, thank you very much. Would you, please, um, take your motion back?
Not a problem.
Thank you.
Done.
Excellent. May I have a motion on article twenty-one, Town of Wareham Playground Revolving Fund, Ms. Wertz?
I move to recommend favorable action to the town meeting on article twenty-one. Town of Wareham Playground Revolving Fund, a citizen's petition.
May I have second to the motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded for creating a revolving fund? Yes, Mr. Slaven?
Uh, it goes back some time ago, the uh Director of Municipal Maintenance was asked probably four, five years ago. How many playgrounds can you actually take care of and maintain? Uh, Mr. Manad made it very clear, the number was two. I believe we have six or seven now. Uh, this asked for a hundred thousand dollars will not even begin to cover the cost of having to have extra two or three people working in municipal maintenance. Will not even begin to cover the cost of having to have extra two or three people working in municipal maintenance. If we could even hire them, never mind. So at this point here, most of the newer playgrounds that have been built. The local citizens have taken care of a lot of the stuff. To be done with it and I have concerns that we're putting. An extra load on the town expense-wise for actual and also on the municipal maintenance department. For staff they don't have.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Chadwick?
The easiest way to solve this all would be bring back a park and recs department. Just wanted to state that one thing, but.
Not disagreeing, Jerry.
No, I know, I know you're not, Alan, it just.
Miss.
Angers me every time I realize that.
I just want, I just want to um, make a statement. Basically, on the other side of the coin that uh, Mr. Slaven's talking about. Yeah, we don't have staff right now, but we don't have funds to help keep these um. Parks, these playgrounds in working order. We need the funds. If we have the funds, then we can look at who, who we need to hire or use to implement. Take the certain types of repairs that might be na- made. Made at variable different, different playgrounds, I would say. I think this is a good idea.
Mr. Bessie?
So, here's my concern, and I think this goes back um. On the planning side is, you know, we plan for these parks. People come forward to have these parks revamped, rehabbed, rebuilt. But they don't think about the long-term cost associated with maintaining those. And now we're in a position where, hey, we've built brand-new parks here, you know, we just spent. Three hundred thousand dollars or whatever it was to build a new park in Swift Beach. You know, we've got a park in Shango Lot, so we've got all these nice parks that are being built. But now, we're, it's kind of like we're doing it backwards. Like, we should have thought about having a revolving fund for maintaining these parks before we built these parks. And now we're, you know, we're kind of being reactionary to it. Um. I think it's a good thing, but I just think that it was poorly planned and it's something that should have been maybe talked about. You know, five years ago when parks were being, you know, fixed and rehabbed and, and built. Um, you know, so that's my concern is that, you know, we've built all this and invested all of this money, CPC funds and all of these things. And now we're like, okay, well, how are we gonna maintain them? Um, so it's kind of like a, an afterthought and it should have really been the first thought.
Thank you. I would note for the record that's on about a million dollars that has been invested in playgrounds in the past five years. We have a motion? Do we have a motion yet?
I make a motion. That I move, actually, I not only make a motion, I'll even move it to recommend favorable action to the town meeting. On article twenty-one, Town of Wareham Playground Revolving Funds, it's a citizen's petition.
Second, motion made and seconded. I think we might have done that before.
I think we might have too.
Yeah, I think we did. So anyway, uh, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion on the um, recommendation for favorable action to the town meeting? Seeing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
No.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
And myself, yes, four one zero. Thank you very much. And the citizens' petition for article twenty-two, Ms. Wertz, may I have a motion, please?
I don't, I don't know that this is a citizen's petition, it's um. It is.
It is a citizen's petition.
I move to recommend favorable action to the town meeting on the petition for the Parker Mills Dam.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to recommend favorable action. To the town meeting on the citizens' petition. Is there any further discussion on this motion, Mr. Slaven?
Uh, we've already committed as a board to going ahead and doing this. Uh, we've made a commitment to remove the dam completely. And if we cannot come up with appropriate funds, we would go to Plan B and partially remove. Uh, I don't see any rea- I'm gonna abstain because we've already committed to doing this.
Thank you. Any, yes, Mr. Chadwick?
Um, I know I can't find it easily in this mess over here, but wasn't this also to? Um. Talk to this citizen's petition, wasn't it also to talk to make peace about the dam as well?
It was, no, it was to uh, direct the selectmen to, as Mr. Slaven has said, do what we've already been doing.
Oh, all right, then I must have read something else.
Well, in the explanation, it may have been, but. It is to, it is to direct the, the um, select board to do what it's already been doing. Any further discussion? I will go for a roll call vote on the motion for favorable recommendation, Mr. Bessie?
Abstain.
Mr. Slaven?
Abstain.
Mr. Chadwick?
I'm gonna do the same.
Ms. Wertz?
I'm gonna say yes, because if it reinforces our citizens in understanding that we are already doing this. I have no problem with reinforcing that.
Thank you. I will abstain, one zero four. Okay, uh, we'll come back to some of the other ones next week. And now I'd like to move on to liaison and initiative reports, Mr. Bessie?
Uh, none this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chadwick.
None, thank you.
Mr. Slaven?
Just a few, I'll do it as quickly as I can. I'm getting tired. Uh, last week, um. On Wednesday, uh, what they have with Serpent. Uh, the Swift Beach Project, which is the realignment of the Swift Beach Road. And the traffic light was moved to the fiscal year twenty twenty-five from fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Uh, the, the fiscal year start like July first of, say, twenty-three and go into twenty-four. So this would basically start in July of twenty twenty-four and go forward. I'm unable to get them to move it back. Uh, I'm gonna have a meeting, uh, I think next to twenty-first before our selectmen's meeting. Uh, with the MPO at Serpent, uh, and the final projects will be approved going forward as far as locked in date-wise. So I'll have a better answer, but I'm lobbying as hard as I can because, as we all know, Littleton Drive is probably gonna. Um, start to dig out, start working on this immediately on their project. Which means we would have a substantial number of new people going in and out of Swift Beach in a year and a half. Um, the other piece, I had a meeting with Mass DOT this past week. Uh, well, actually, a week ago, with uh, the fire chiefs. And also, uh, I'd say the DOT people, talking about issues we have with the. People driving up into the driveways of certain businesses along Route six and twenty-eight. Also, some of the road construction on six and twenty-eight. And of course, the utility poles that are sitting out in the middle of the, of the road as you drive down the road. And uh, they had a really solid discussion, they're gonna resolve, I think, everything over a period of time here. The only thing that's very disappointing is, as usual, ever sources uh, telling people that might be a year or more before those poles are moved. Um, so Mass DOT is gonna try and uh, use leverage that they have to make these poles get moved earlier. It'll be interesting to see what happens. And yesterday, I did listen and monitor the police study. Meeting about the new police, potential police station. We have a meeting on Thursday, the information. You'll all be able to listen to and stuff and I'm hoping that on the twenty-first meeting. That the Board of Selectmen will basically at that point make a decision how we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to um, add to what Mr. Slaven said. The town was notified um, a couple of days ago that it will take up to two years to move those poles out of the middle of the roadway.
Yep, I know.
Okay, um. Miss, Mr. Chadwick, now?
No, saying of, I'm saying a smart aleck remark, never mind.
Okay. Ms. Wertz?
No, I, other than, um, I've just been um. Inundated with understanding what all the different um, groups that I'm a liaison to, how. Active they are and how can, how um, busy they are with regard to getting ready for town meeting. It's, it's really quite something.
Thank you. Um, I do have some forty-eight hour business, I'm sorry, I have to go back to that. Um, I gave a presentation to the Council on Aging, which was really fun. Um, there were a lot of very good questions about some of the programs that are available. I had uh, Jackie Nichols with me, the um, head assessor. And she was also giving information to our senior citizens about some of the programs available to them. Uh, for tax abatements and the work-off program, that kind of thing. So that was very um, enlightening, it was fun, actually. Um, and. I will now move to the forty-eight hour business. Um, I was notified today. By Damian's um pantry that they would like us to write a letter of support. In their pursuit of a fiscal year twenty-four community project funding request. We were made aware of that through Mr. um, Keating's office today. I have drafted a letter of support which would say, basically, that we support the um endeavor. We support their application to the grant and also telling um, the people who would be looking at the documentation. That we've actually committed some of the CDPG grants to Damian's pantry. So I would like a, an authorization from you to uh, allow the chair to. Send the letter in support the deadline for the grant is the seventeenth. Thank you.
Second.
Move, motion made and seconded. This will be on the agenda next week, we're confirmatory votes. Is there any further discussion on the? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
I have to abstain because I lost audio, so I don't even know what you're talking about.
It's to ask the board to authorize me to send a letter in support of Damian's pantry. Application for a community project funding request, which we found out from Mr. Keating's office today. The deadline for the request or the grant application is Friday. So it would need, it, you would need to authorize me to write a letter of support. To Mr., well, to, on behalf of, of Damian's pantry, so that they could apply for up to five hundred thousand dollars. Of grant available through this program. Um, and I also mentioned that we have already supported. Uh, Damian's pantry with part of the money from our CDPG grant, and that would be part of what I would put in the letter.
Oh, yes.
All right, um, so can I go for a roll call vote again, again, Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
And Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
And myself, yes, thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, we have um, some minutes for February twenty-first and February twenty-eighth. Ms. Wertz, can you make a motion, please?
They, I make a motion, um. That we approve the meeting minutes for February twenty-first, not twenty twenty-three and February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three. And I think there's a small scribner's note on one of them. Um, that a word of or something is missing, but it's pretty much, um. Let me just see where it is, page two.
Okay, so we'll.
Yeah, so it's pretty, yeah, it's minor, yeah.
May I have a second to the motion, please? Motion made and seconded to approve those minutes. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Ward?
Yes.
Myself, yes. The next articles to be approved, I'm gonna give you the motion. I move that we approve and hold the following executive session minutes. November ninth, twenty twenty-one, November sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, December seventh, twenty twenty-one. January fourth, twenty twenty-two, February eighth, twenty twenty-two. These have been revised. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion on the motion to approve the revised minutes? Seeing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes, and there's a couple of just spacing and scribner's things on.
Ms. Wertz, thank you. Yes or no?
But yes.
And myself, yes, five zero zero, they have been approved. Is there any further business to come before this body? No? Then, Mr. Slaven?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, motion made and seconded to adjourn, not debatable. I will go for a roll call vote, please, Mr. Slaven.
I'll be good, yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
No.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Thank you very much and good night, Wareham.
Have a good night.